Evening, everyone. This is the Rutland Town Select Board Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. It is 6:01. Select Board members, we have everybody here tonight. Kurt Hathaway, Joe DiNardo, Mary Ashcroft, Mac Eddy, and Sharon Russell. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Angels.
States, America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, et in justus.
Just as a reminder of that, all flags be flown at half-mast tomorrow. So if anybody who's watching has a flag at home.
Okay, and the reason. Wow, how did that come up on us so fast? Okay, yes, thank you, Marty. Appreciate that. Day the earth changed. Okay, um, Select Board Minutes. We have the minutes of August 27th, Regular Meeting. That's in your packet. And I think we were all here. We were all here.
To accept as printed.
Joe's moved to accept as printed, seconded by Matt. Any other additions? These are the ones we asked Bill to add in, all of the list of things from our site visit. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries unanimously. So I'm going to sign this. Pass it on. Board member announcements, do we have any? Pretty quiet. Update from the Select Board Chair, I will remind everyone once again that deadline for articles for the Circle, the Circle, our townwide newsletter, deadline to get them in is September 15th, which is Sunday. Okay, so please, if you have something, I think there is a word limit and it's fairly, you can be concise, you can make the limit okay. Please get your Article 2, Janelle, to include in the Circle, which will be coming out on or about October 1st, okay? All right. We are, oh, we have good, DCF Commissioner Chris Winters on the phone now. And so we're going to take things slightly out of order. And we thank Commissioner Winters for calling in very much. We invited him for an update on where we are with housing at the Cortina. And do you want to, do you want to start, or we just start peppering you with questions? Either way is good.
Thanks for the invite. I'll start off just very briefly. Thank you for inviting us. My name's Chris Winters. I'm the Commissioner of the Department for Children and Families, and I'm joined tonight by Deputy Commissioner Miranda Gray, who is in charge of the Economic Services Division. And she has a lot more expertise than I do on the hotel motel program. I can tell you that the last time I visited, I was there with the Deputy Secretary of the Agency of Human Services, Todd Delos, and I think the legislature had just passed the new requirements for the program. And so happy to answer whatever questions you have, provide you with some information about what we think you can expect in the coming weeks as the eligibility rules change and the number of days run out for some people. So happy to start wherever you'd like. Turn it back over to you for questions, I guess.
Okay, well, I had a couple. I went back to our May 21st meeting, which was when you folks were down, and we appreciate very much that you're back with us. So at that time, you had not signed any kind of lease with Cortina. Have you done so now?
We have not. I'll defer to Deputy Commissioner Gray. I don't believe we've signed any leases with hotels at this point. We thought maybe that would be the case coming out of the legislative session, and it turns out that we have not done leases with hotels.
Okay. Is is that the plan? I mean, and we ask because in our agreement with the Cortina, we had some very specific requirements for security and safety and public rooms and place spaces and that sort of thing. And we had suggested, and we gave you a copy of our lease, we had suggested that you include those as conditions to kind of help us out and provide, you know, a safe place for these folks to be. So is that in the works?
What I can tell you is that that was something that was considered to allow room, allow hotel owners to charge a little bit more for rooms if they provided additional services and amenities. We have not done that negotiation with the hotels and motels. What we are doing is holding them to stricter standards of health and safety. And we're keeping a close eye on security issues. And I'll just say that towns are free to enter into whatever agreements they want to with the hotels themselves. And if you want some backup from us, if you're seeing a lot of problems, if you're seeing security issues, if you're seeing health and safety violations, you're always free to contact us, and we work with the Health Department on that. We work with our security partners on that. But the leases that were discussed early on are something that's no longer on the table for us.
They are no longer on the table? Okay.
Miranda, do you want to add anything more to that? I want to make sure I didn't misspeak here.
Yes, if I may, and thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the invitation to be with you tonight. I just wanted to add that the Cortina, we have actually not been making any new placements there for about a month and a half now because of the number of complaints that we had received and the conditions of the hotel. And most recently, the Food and Lodging Division at the Health Department does have an abatement order. They have very clear next steps that they have to take by room in order to come into compliance and to maintain their health and safety standards, which right now they are lacking in some areas.
And we had heard that there were, there was a team down here, we weren't sure which agency, or at least I wasn't, to go room by room, and I'm assuming that's what resulted in this abatement order?
That's correct. Yep. So it's the Food and Lodging, and I believe also the Division of Fire Safety Teams were out inspecting.
Is there some reason the local health officer wasn't included?
I want to say that they were, but I'm not certain, just because that isn't necessarily, but I want to say that they were. But I can certainly find out.
I will tell you that they weren't.
Okay, yeah, the person speaking is John Paul Fignan, who is our Town Health Officer, and he was not invited. I forgot how we heard about it, but we did not hear about it through official channels.
Okay, thank you for letting me know.
Is there any chance that we can get a copy of this report or any of the written findings from what's there, so the town has some idea what's going on, since our health officer wasn't there?
Yeah, let me check with the Health Department. I believe this is a public matter of public record, but because it isn't out of my division, I'm not certain, but I am happy to follow up, and if I can, then I'm happy to pass that along to you.
Okay, would you let us know either way, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Matt?
I just want to remind the Commissioner that when you were here visiting before, I believe there was a commitment made that the numbers for vouchers in Rutland would be reduced regardless of the whatever's going on with health and safety at that hotel. And I wonder where things stand with that. Will you be continuing to hold off on issuing new vouchers for that location until the numbers around the state are more equitable?
Maybe the Deputy Commissioner can address that. I will say, just in general, we are reducing the number of rooms statewide, as I think you know. As of September 15th, we have an 1,100-room cap. And as we look at that, we want to look at distributing the rooms more equitably statewide. And I'll turn it over to the Deputy Commissioner to see how much progress we've made in that regard.
Thanks, Commissioner. So it is continued to be a work in progress with knowing that we do have this 1,100-room cap that is coming into place and not wanting to move households unnecessarily beforehand, and we have really been at capacity across the state for most of the, since July 1st. But we are entering, so the 19th of September is when households will start reaching their 80 days for the new law. That is all that households get until it's December 1st until March 31st, which is when our adverse weather conditions is when the temperature is cooler, then households aren't held to the 80-day cap, but we are embarking on that time period where we know that households will reach their cap, then potentially could have access, but then again, that 80-day cap is in effect as of April 1st. So we are anticipating and are looking to make sure as we have the rooms reduced as to what the Commissioner had mentioned, that we do have rooms available across the state, because we need to make sure that we're able to serve the Vermonters in every area of the state.
Can you tell us how many people are currently housed at the Cortina, and how many of them are children?
So I don't have the Cortina number, and I apologize. And I wish I would be able to ping someone. I will try while we're here in the meeting. I have the total, so Rutland, because we use more than the Cortina. We have 353 households in Rutland right now.
And so 353 households?
Yeah.
So that could be quite another, quite more individuals. That could be 700 or 800 individuals or more?
Yeah, we usually say it's a little, like 1.2, give you that number of individuals. And another data point that I think that it did come with, that I thought might be helpful, is just knowing we are anticipating, we've been looking at projections as much as we can with only really two months' worth of data to go off of. If we are anticipating that there will be 85 households in Rutland that will hit their 80 days on the 19th.
Okay.
And those rooms wouldn't be necessarily backfilled, or like, you know, somebody else put in them, because that's a part of our needing to make sure that we have capacity statewide. And in particular, the Cortina will continue until they're in compliance, but the Health Department will not receive any new placement.
Yep, Matt?
So the issue that we're certain to experience, and I'm sure you've been hearing about from the city, is that now that these folks have been located here on vouchers, they're going to run out of their time, and they're going to be on the streets of Rutland. So I'm not sure what the answer to that is going to be in support, but I just would beg the state to be responsive to any way that you can support the community, because that's a burden that's basically been allocated to Rutland disproportionately and is going to be carried locally.
Yeah, definitely. Go ahead.
Going to say, we hear you. We have a lot of partners on the ground trying to connect people to services and get them into more permanent housing solutions. We really don't have any way of knowing if people have other options, because, you know, if they told us that they did, it might put in jeopardy their ability to be housed by us. So we'll have to see.
We're hearing anecdotally that some of these folks are going to be setting up camp near where they're currently located, and so that's going to create its own issues.
Yep, I'm sure it is. We'd love to stay in touch with the community. We've got our Field Services Director on the ground. We've got a lot of service providers in the area. If there's anything that the state can do to support, we'd love to hear from you, but we are continuing to try to connect people with services, get them to places where they have more stable housing situations, but understood that some people will not have another option. They may be camping.
So what do we do with campers? I mean, winter's coming, and they may or may not, you know, December 1st, it can be awfully cold before then. What do we do? And what can the state provide for these folks to make sure they survive?
You know, we're working within the budget that we have and the room caps that were handed to us under the new law. We would love to see additional shelter space in Rutland. We're following some leads there. I know the Rutland Housing Trust is looking at a couple of pieces of property, and we're trying to find a provider to work on that, so that we have additional shelter in Rutland. So know that we are working on that, and we're open to further ideas. We do have some funding for that to support it, but we just don't have the location or the provider at this point.
So the land that you're looking for, is that to set up campsites, or is that longer range? You had mentioned the Loretto home last time you were talking to us.
Yeah, we're thinking of buildings. We're not thinking of campsites or modular or land. We're hoping that a community partner comes forward with an idea for a building to set up a winter shelter.
So if the town of Rutland gave you 29 acres of land, how quickly could you put up a winter shelter?
So we explored that last year, the concept of mobile shelters. The problem, the real expense, the mobile units themselves are fairly expensive, but we could purchase those. The issue is having someone to man the site, having someone with experience to run it, having the services that are necessary onsite. We looked into contractors for that. We looked into EMS for that. And it's really, it's the numbers as we ran them last year, it looked at somewhere around $1 million to run a site for just a couple of months. So setting up mobile shelters, setting up temporary shelters is something that's possible, but it's really, really expensive. We have money available, but we don't have that much money available.
Very.
So the ideal is to have a provider, a shelter provider, a building, and service providers in the local community connected to people who are staying in those shelters to assist them.
Sharon?
Yeah, you know, I had a thought. How much are you paying per night at the Cortina, if I can ask?
$80 per night.
What's that?
Eighty, eight zero.
Eighty per person?
Eight zero, okay.
Okay.
For rooms.
So here's my thought. What about if you purchase some land and you built what they call the little houses, the small houses, with one or two bedrooms? And let me finish, and just hear me out. Because my bet is, it's not going to cost you anymore for these little houses. And after two years, with those little houses, people that have paid the rent each month and met their payments, why would it not help out not only the state, but these people? They finally, after two years, if they were consistent to take care of the property and to pay their rent, if they would be given the option to own those houses. What you're doing is, if you want to change the behavior, you change the environment. And my bet is, that isn't going to cost you any more than what you're paying right now. Because if you have a family of five, times eighty-four, you know, that's, to me, it would be, it would be helping areas out, and it would be helping people, you would change their lives. And if that sounds unrealistic, I mean, I've got almost 42 years in the field with the homeless. And I think we've had a great success rate where I worked. So and, and, you know, if you started something like that, I'd even jump in and help out to supervise and what have you. I wouldn't want to do it forever. But, you know, those are things that you ought to think about instead of trying to buy buildings to warehouse them again. You're not going to change their life. You're not going to change their behavior. All you're doing is warehousing. And I think, I think there's a lot of good people out there. I wouldn't want to have to pay rents now. They're unbelievable. But if you can change their environment, you can change their behavior.
There's a lot of wisdom in what you just said there. I don't disagree with it at all. That's been tried in some other states, I think, with some success. We have something somewhat similar in Burlington with the Longwood shelters, their pods, they're basically, they don't have, there's not a lot to them. That's what kept them fairly inexpensive. It's a locked door, and it's privacy and it's dignity, and it's a, you know, a quiet space.
If you changed it to little houses, it would give them the dignity of having a place.
I don't disagree. I think you'd be surprised by how much a tiny house costs. We have, we happen with that.
I have. So we've got our police chief here, we've got our health officer, our second constable here, we've got our fire chief. And so I think we could all appreciate, tell us what we should do if we find formerly housed folks camping somewhere, and we're concerned about their health and safety, camping on town property, camping on private property, and we think it's going to happen. Who do we call? And how do we get them help?
So I'm curious as to whether you have a protocol for that now, because there are people sheltering outside all of the time. Maybe it won't be in the same numbers. But typically, you get them connected with your local service providers like Homelessness Prevention Center. I know Brock has services, Lit is still doing some good work, I think, and Homelessness Vermont is in the area. And you have our local Field Services Director, Adam Sansic, who can help connect you to the right people and the right services. And we try to wrap a team around people and help them whenever we can, especially when we see some of these more complicated cases.
Okay, police chief? No? Okay. Health officer?
So long as we get a copy of those reports, I'm good.
Okay, fire chief? Emergency management chief?
I just have a question, Mr. Winters. And I still think at present, the federal government has, like the state of Vermont has excessive equipment, auctions and sales, and the federal government has multiple house trailers. Has that been looked at at all? I don't know if that still exists, or?
Yeah, yes, sir. I'm glad you brought that up. One of the projects that we are working on, on a statewide level, and this is more our partners in the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, the Housing and Conservation Division, they're looking for vacant lots across the state in mobile home parks. And they've been able to secure, I'm not sure if they're FEMA trailers, but I think it's some sort of government surplus trailers. They're small, they're one-bedroom, they're fairly inexpensive. And they're working with mobile home parks, the owners, to cite those fairly inexpensive trailers there in their vacant lots, and then set families up from, not just families, but individuals as well from our Coordinated Entry System. So these are people who are exiting homelessness and getting them connected. I think, much like you were talking about earlier, ma'am, like, so where they can, they'll get a rental subsidy, they'll get some help, but they have to, you know, take care of the property. And then eventually, they could make payments on it and eventually own it. That's a project that's just getting off the ground. It's, we call it our Mobile Home Infill Project. But I do believe that we are using some of those government surplus trailers to do that. So that is one of the other projects that we're working on to try to exit people from homelessness and get them into a home of their own.
Thank you.
I may be in touch.
Excellent. Good, good to know.
Agency of Commerce and Community Development?
Yeah, go ahead and write to me, and I will, I'll connect you to the right people.
Okay, if my contractor gets my septic system done.
Easy.
Sitting in the room. Other questions for the Commissioner?
My only thing would be, my question would be, you know, Rutland and Burlington seems to be getting the bulk of all this. What about places like Manchester and Woodstock? Is it because there's so much wealth over there that you don't want to disrupt, disrupt the community? I mean, all Vermonters should be treated equal. Doesn't matter if you live in Manchester, or Woodstock, or an expensive community. Why are we leaving them out? Why aren't they sharing the wealth? I mean, it's not really the wealth, but why aren't they sharing the burden that we're all sharing?
I think the, there's many, many answers to that, but I think the simplest one is that we had to house people where the hotel rooms were and where we had hotels that were willing to work with us. And also, you tend to see people with complex needs congregate toward where the services are. And so in a lot of small towns, they just don't have the services available. So you'll see a greater homeless population where there is a greater population in general, where there are services, and for our programs, where there are shelters and where there are hotel rooms available.
What's your best advice to this Select Board? How we, how we deal with this?
You know, I think we have to approach folks with empathy. This is, this is a really difficult situation. We're hopeful that people can find a more permanent housing solution. If they can't, you know, we want to be there with service providers. We want to be there with all the other things that we have available to them, other than a hotel room. So I would just say, keep the lines of communication open with the state, with your local providers, with your teams that you have on the ground there to, you know, to make options available to people. There are resources available, rental subsidies, economic benefits, food benefits, lots of things that we can make available to people. Sometimes the waiting list to get housing is long. That's the most difficult piece of this right now. Sometimes people just need a slight bit of help to get to a more stable place, but we are inevitably going to see more people unsheltered, more people living in cars, more people living on the streets. We're just very hopeful that they can, that they do have the resourcefulness and the other options, and it's not going to be a huge number. And then come the colder months, we'll have more hotel space available then.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the Select Board? No. Thank you again for joining us. We may check in in a couple of months as we approach December 1st. And hope you can be available then, too. So again, we appreciate your willingness to talk to us, and we'll try and keep our lines of communication open, too.
Sounds good. Please reach out at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
You as well.
Okay. Okay, so we were on to questions from the floor, public comments, Marty?
Is there a school that these people go to that they learn, that taught how to talk and talk and say nothing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. When you sign up to work for the state, that's what happens.
Other questions from the floor, public comments? Dave, you have something for us?
Well, the Regional Planning Commission is going to meet next week for the first time in their new quarters. And if the Select Board of the town has anything want to put forward to the Regional Planning Commission, let me know. I do see an item on the bottom here, the request for representation to the bus. I guess we'll get to that.
Um, well, since you're here, Bill, is that something in our packet?
It is, yeah. It's just, Devin forgot to mention that when he was here last.
Oh, okay. Did this just come in? Should we post it and see if anybody wants to? Is there anyone? All right, well, let's post it on our website first and see if there's interest.
No one responds, I guess I can come to a meeting, fall asleep, and get a point.
You have to be careful that way.
I know.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Dave. Anything else? Any questions for Dave Rosenblum, our designee to the Regional Planning Commission? Designee to the regional planning commission? Thanks for coming to townwide celebration and I'm glad we accidentally dumped a hamburger on the ground. So your dog had a treat.
Usually on Sundays. A sugar and spice going for breakfast and before they take my order, they bring a side order of bacon for him. Unfortunately, I was in Maine for a wedding this weekend and he didn't get his bacon. However, I told the story at the Sunday buffet. For the wedding. And Lady Ronnie got wrapped a couple pieces of bacon for me to take home.
Nice. All right. True neighborliness. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the floor? If not, let's hop right into Marty Wasserman, Town Emergency Management Director.
And town gardener.
Town gardener.
Well, Bill and I, Bill is the emergency management coordinator and I is the emergency management director. We had our first meeting. With Rutland Regional Planning. Stephanie Bork and Greg Toker McKee. Were there and so we started the process. Now. Part of this, what we learned. Is that we. Some of the expense the town has is going to be worked off by the hours that we work. So, for example, I think it's thirty dollars and. One cents, whatever it is an hour. And I have to keep track of my hours for them. And that'll be taking off our part of the expense.
Good. That's our in-kind contribution. Yeah, good.
So.
Thank you for doing that.
Not good at submitting bills and keeping time, but I'll have to.
Yes, you will. Yep.
So we had a kickoff meeting and. Going through this stuff, one of the things is I want to get, we want to get the public involved. And. So they sent these, which I'm not quite sure, Bill and I are talking about what we can do with them. Is to hang them up where they're visible. This talks about what assets are most at risk. Turn this way so you can see it as well. So this is what concerns people have. So we have all these types of things and. They gave us stickers to put on there so we can get an idea of what's most important, what's least important. And so Bill and I were talking about how we're going to take everything off the walls in the hallway. And post our posters, because of course, since this is my committee, it's the most important.
Naturally.
Naturally. So I've already started getting public involvement. I wrote, wrote an article to put. Into the circle. And I'm also going to send an article to the front porch forum.
Good.
And that I'll keep, keep up with. If you like, I'll read this to you. What I plan on putting in is, you want to hear it?
Sure. It's short. I'm assuming both publications look for that.
Rutland Town has entered into agreement with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to work with the town. To have approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, our local hazard mitigation plan. This was last done in two thousand nineteen and that agreement will soon expire. The most obvious reason for this is our ERAF or Emergency Relief and Assistance Fund. There are three levels that deal with the town's reimbursement from the federal government. The first level is seven point five percent, the second is twelve point five percent, and the third is seventeen point five percent. As of the document signed and approved in two thousand nineteen, we were at the twelve point five percent level. But with the new agreement coming up, we are striving for the seventeen point five level. We'll be sending out information to help you understand what is happening at different points through the process. Input from our town residents will be important. If you have any questions, please email me at my email address. Or even call me at my phone number. Thank you, Martin Wasserman, Rutland County MD. I couldn't get into a lot because you can only print so much, but I think when you're talking money. That catches people's attention. And the other thing I need to do is strictly use initials. I put what those initials meant. Because that drives me crazy when you get that. So the schedule of this. Was. The program kickoff, which was in August, the. I'm going to put on my glasses, that'll help me read. You don't like getting older.
Oh geez, there's words on that page.
Outlay strategy is through September, right through to January. Gather data and complete the risk assessment. That's September and October. So we're going to have to get, we'll work on that and get that done. Then. Developing the mitigation strategy is November and December. Finalized draft plan and submit to Vermont Emergency Management. And revise as needed. That's mid-December to February. And then adjust plan and submit file for final approval. That's in February two thousand twenty-five. So that's our timeline that we're working on and. We've gone into. Different things that were adopted back in two thousand nineteen and see what we have to improve on it. Because like I said in my little note, we were, we got up to the twelve point five instead of being at the seven percent. But I like to get us to the seventeen. Hopefully we never have to use it, but, or receive it, I should say, but. I'd rather it be if we needed to at the seventeen than at the lower amount.
So in the event of a disaster, the town incurs expense to clean up or mitigate or whatever. And the federal government covers a certain percentage and the state covers a certain, and then the town covers. But why, so. Why are, we were at, okay, the other way around.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's what we don't have to come up with on our section, not what we have to come up with.
Okay.
So the higher the level, the cuts off what we earn, what they suppose we're supposed to pay.
Okay.
It cuts that down, not up. So. Is there any questions that the select board have for me on this, at this point? Quite honestly, we're new to this. We're just getting started. First thing I got to find out from a fellow who's working on this is how he's going to send me emails that I can open. I can't open any of them.
You know, you've got the transfer station. Maybe you could do something up there some Saturday morning. Yeah.
That's going to be part of it.
Okay, good.
I mean, everything we can think of to get in front of the public.
Right.
And. So we're going to be doing that.
Nope. Any questions from select board?
I like to change my hat for a minute.
Okay.
Okay, I'm taking off my emergency management, put on my gardener hat.
Okay.
I like to publicly thank the highway crew, especially Dave. My wife and I went up to the pump station at Post Road and Seventh. And started pulling weeds. And during the midst of that, we had a good sized pile. But in the midst of that, I found ground bees, or I should say they found me. And I still have some of the effects from that, because my wife stopped counting at thirty. But there were so many bees on me. So anyhow, we got to get back to that and we will soon and. We're gonna redo this a little bit out front, because this year it just didn't do well.
We're missing the colorful story about what Dave did to those bees.
I'm sorry?
We're missing the colorful story about what Dave did to those bees.
Oh, yeah. He went and he put bee spray, whatever that might be. And I didn't ask, is that what you call kerosene? Supposedly he's got this bee spray down in the hole, so it's up to me to go back and see if it really works or not.
You don't even have to light it.
You know, some long sleeve stuff.
You pour it down in the hole and you don't even have to light it. No, I'll be.
So.
There's a lot of them this year.
Illegal commercial product.
Okay, well, thanks to you and Mary.
Maybe crew. They picked up the pile of stuff we had. They mowed it up there. So it's looking better, but still looks so overgrown, but we'll get back.
It is looking better. I did notice it. Thank you to you and Mary for the work that you put in. We appreciate it.
So we'll keep doing that and I want to thank. Mike for taking on the responsibility of the senior group, the treasurer. But I know I can't be present because I'm, I miss a lot of the meetings being on my way at times. So Mike took it on and we're having our first senior luncheon. I'll happen to be down in North Carolina. So, because I want to go to that group and say, hey, who wants to help the town? And see if we get some of the seniors to. Part of a, I don't want to call it the garden club because Rutland Garden Club already has that name. But have a group of people that we can all work on these gardens to help unify the town.
Okay. And I think Mike's probably, is he not on? Okay, so let me do it.
He had to be at a meeting.
The. The Rutland Town seniors are reconvening and they will have lunch at Denny's on September twenty-fourth. Which is two weeks from today. The time is eleven thirty. That's Denny's, eleven thirty at. Two weeks from now, September twenty-fourth. So, and I've been watching the emails. There are a lot of people who are. And I got calls from some friends who said, I'm interested. How do we sign up? So Mike is getting the word out just fine. Continue to spread the work and we can have a good group of folks. Yep.
Yep, I'm going to go up and see him and give him the town credit card that we have for the seniors.
Okay.
So he can take care of paying the bill. So if there's nothing else from you, I'm done.
Under any of his hats, are there any questions for Marty Wasserman? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Chris Clark, town fire chief.
All right, couple things tonight. First of all, I have a new application. Where? Or a. Egan Anderson, who's on Meadow Lake Drive on the Mendon side, senior in high school. We met with him. He did the background check. So with your approval, I'd like to get him on board.
And that's for, and you have capacity for an out of town person?
We do.
Okay. Is there a?
We accept the application.
Motion's made in the seconded discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, it's unanimous. I think you passed that and we all sign it, if I remember correctly.
Second, two weeks ago, I believe it was, we asked for a washer and dryer for the fire station.
Yes.
We ordered the washer. The dryer, we found out will not fit in the room. So Reynolds, who was our preferred customer or.
Preferred vendor, yep.
Cannot help us. We've been shopping around. I'm not asking for one tonight. I guess what I'm asking is, when I do find one, can we get it from a different vendor? Because I'd like to, if, when I find one, I want to order it soon as possible so it gets here to be installed before they're all done.
Is the price the same?
Well, this one's actually cheaper, but he's, the guy's still working on. Sizes.
So, yeah.
It's actually quite a bit cheaper. I haven't compared the two yet.
Okay, what I suggest you do is get us something that shows the comparison. We can approve a new vendor and if this is somebody we, looks like we're going to be doing business with.
Yeah.
We can do it that way.
Okay.
It doesn't hurt to have a couple of bids or at least.
This is the only guy that got back to us so far. So we do have a couple. Offers out there.
Okay.
Do you think it's less because it's substantially smaller or just?
I can't remember the size of the room. This is sixty-one and an eighth inches. Long, wide. I can't remember how big the room is.
Find one that physically fits in the space allocated that you plan.
That's, that's the plan.
Yeah.
And Reynolds doesn't offer you one.
Yeah.
No, the one we had. Got the quote for a year ago. They discontinued. They have a new model which is longer. So it won't.
Is there like, is there an actual difference in terms of the amount of equipment that it will hold or is it simply just?
We're still looking for.
Marginal edging is different.
I guess just the edging's different. We want a six, to hold six sets of gear like the washer does.
So the idea is find one that still meets that?
Right.
Okay.
Right. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you.
Third. Let's see here. Oh, the pickup truck.
Oh, yeah.
One person, me. I think we've settled on like fifteen hundred bucks.
And my desk.
But just, that was the only person interested, me.
Okay.
So I, I don't.
Was it, was it sixty-five hundred?
It was six, six thousand.
Six thousand, okay. Is there a, and you've canvassed the fireman.
I did. Sent an email to everybody, asked everybody at meetings.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'd move that we sell a nineteen ninety-three Ford F three fifty pickup to Chris Clark as per. Pre-determined price and our predetermined arrangement.
Process. Okay, motion's been made. Is there, and the second by Sharon? Any discussion?
We will accept the fingerprint machine and barter.
And you'll leave my desk alone.
I don't know. I like that desk right there.
All in favor quickly, please say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Don't worry about the desk.
I think that's all I had.
Bet we couldn't find somebody else to, like, could make them like these. I mean, these are great.
These are great.
What do you think if I ask the Stafford class?
What I was thinking.
That would be, yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah.
I can ask them tomorrow.
You know, I will tell you that it's, you've touched a nerve with me on, on a desk because I walked into, well, back when I worked for a railroad. I walked in one day, having been gone for a few days. And my desk was gone and it was replaced by a little soapbox. So I hope that doesn't happen. Apparently they felt I was.
Yeah, I got, I got a meeting with Tyler ten-four up there at Stafford.
Yeah.
No, ten-four.
Oh.
Coming up.
Yeah, if you see him first, mention it.
You can mention, I'll mention it.
I think it's pretty good.
It's too bad that the corrections couldn't give us the plans, you know, they must have something in, somebody could.
Yeah, maybe if I take a picture.
I mean, the whole, everything we got them just in time. You know, they match all through the building, which is.
You know, let me, I know the guy who used to coordinate, or I, yeah. So let me pass word through and see if he can locate the plans. That's a great idea.
Yeah, they must have plans.
They must.
I, I had the welding class build us hose racks a couple of years ago. And they don't charge you, but I got you guys to give a donation and I went to Max Steel and reordered everything they. Use for material.
Great. Okay.
That's all I got.
Local resource. Any questions for our fire chief? Okay, thanks very much, chief. Appreciate it. All right, Carrie Clark. Was in earlier. We did have a meeting and finance committee will be meeting with Carrie. So I don't see her on. Next, Mike De La Hanty. I don't see Mike. Ed Dumas, town police chief. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, we do have some things here.
I do have the monthly stats, thanks to Lynette. I was approached earlier today by uh, Chris Larson. I gave him a copy of these. Some committee he was working on.
Yeah.
Yes. So you see, we're at one eighteen of a hundred and forty-eight cases, about eighty percent retired down the south end.
Well, that's kind of a constant, isn't it? What are you seeing for folks who are now camping around?
Lot of complaints about the uh Castleton uh, the skate rink up there by the mall.
Mm-hmm.
Um, did we invite him to come to mall next time?
Next meeting, twenty-fourth.
Yeah, they broke in there, the window, the door was down. I set a picture Bill, Bill took care of that. I haven't gone back to see if it's uh, if they fixed it. I think they have uh, have had some complaints about the gentleman who runs the skating rink or that exercise center for Castle. There's a I think we put out a thing to the gentleman at the mall to take in, post this property, properly posted under Title X, official game rules, so that you can file it here with the town so that we can enforce the uh, the trespassing people at that point in time. The problem, the problem is where the, where the mall, where the skate rink is, they don't own the property anywhere around it, so they're having issues with the homeless coming and using the bathroom. They had somebody get arrested there. Police were not asked by, probably I assume state police were having an actual physical, you know, altercation with somebody that they needed to be arrested. He's got a warrant for his arrest or something of that nature. So that was, he said that the people there are concerned and upset about what's going on down.
People at the skating rink.
At, at the.
So does the separate ownership of the skating rink prevent any posting around the mall?
Right. So to get them all to post on the mall, then we have to say, hey, hit the road, get out of here, you're not welcome here. Uh, again, and they're coming in there and they're using the facilities like it's the hotel things coming in, do what they want in there, so that's so the other people that are using it on a regular basis are, are more concerned now. Ted, you actually spoke to, is it Mr. Wolf? Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So how far do we want to be in the business of, of evicting trespassers from private property?
Uh.
Isn't that really?
That's an active thing with the mall that you, but we still have an obligation to assist. I think we should, we have some obligation to keep the people safe at the, the skating place.
Hmm.
So but yeah, they should have, the mall should take and do something, hire somebody to patrol their area and get rid of the problem, not lay it on us.
And it should, right, it shouldn't be Rutland Town. It should be, according to their Act two fifty permit, their own, well, the sheriff's department
Yeah.
was what it was.
Yeah.
Um, you'll be here uh, next select board meeting on the twenty-fourth?
Should be.
Because we've got the mall folks coming in to talk to us, so that would be a good thing to raise with them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we want to invite Mr. Wolf to that meeting also.
Okay. That'd be fun.
I could see this being a serious problem over the winter when, I mean, Frank's can be busy all the time.
Yes. Okay, um, can you make sure he's also invited, Bill? Thank you. Okay.
That's for that. Uh, the other thing we have is the uh, monthly satisfied a hundred and twelve calls for service, thirty-six plus thirty-six traffic stops. We started to have a problem with the ambush at the Cortina, but uh, it kind of figured itself out at this point in time.
Okay.
I'm inclined to let Drew handle that as best he can. Get in the conversation with him about it's allowed this to happen, that it's his responsibility to take it.
Mm-hmm. Those, and this is kind of a JP question too. Is the security in yet on the back door at the Cortina?
I know he's got some blue wires stung inside the wall to uh, facilitate that, I guess. He mentioned that last time he was here.
Yes, he did.
I can verify. What's that?
Yeah.
Couple of times.
Yes.
It's been seventy-five percent finished for a while.
I'd be interested to see what the uh, state of the month health department has.
Uh, that will be good report to get ahold of, yes, indeed.
You actually think they're going to send it to us?
Well.
I think they're probably hoping we will forget.
Hmm.
They're hoping, they're hoping Rutland Town's gonna go away. That's what they're hoping.
Bill's gonna put all of this stuff in the minutes. It's gonna be very detailed as to what, what was said, so we can do some follow-up here. Yeah. Okay, questions for our chief of police?
Looks like, oh, a small sample size, but vehicle pets are continuing to be, to run a pace with other forms.
Yes, because people are still not learning the lesson of locking their vehicles or are they getting more aggressive?
Uh, I think uh, some of my U-Hauls running to somebody for, oh, I just need it for a day and they drive it all the way to Minneapolis, Minnesota. Keep the car until the state lease out there found in.
Oh, I was, sorry, I was talking about petty larceny from a motor vehicle.
Oh, okay.
Not the whole vehicle, which, not that those, that's aren't a part.
If you don't have your vehicles locked or you have anything of value that your car, it's, it's gonna get stolen.
People are just not getting the message. They take after all this time.
People, that happens to other people, but then it happens to them. Then they go to the town and they'll buy gift cards at Hanaford's or Michael's or they know enough not to buy too much worth because that'll trigger an automatic shut up in the credit cards. They have to write down to a science and what they can get away with before the uh, credit card gets shut off.
Yeah.
Most people nowadays have something on phones or apps, so if their credit card is used, it comes up almost immediately, so it's getting harder for them. Still, if you just, don't, don't leave your guns in your car. Just take them in the house. I get it, but don't leave them in your car. It just makes it bad for everybody. Lock it up in your house or keep it in your house next to you, on you, whatever, but not in your car unlocked. Even if you live in the country, they're coming into your house and they're stealing stuff. Those of us who live out in the woods think we're safe, but there's always that opportunity for them to come by.
I just got a dog. She barks a lot. Warning, fair warning.
Yes. I guess you'll have a meeting later on with Ted.
Yes, yeah. We will have an executive session to discuss the personnel matter.
Do we want to discuss anything? I know we had a meeting earlier about the Cortina funding, what he's done now.
Um, I'm, I'm, the only thing, we did have a police, was it a police committee or personnel committee?
We had both.
We had both.
Yeah, that was reading them over.
Yeah.
I wasn't here for that.
No. Um, and part of this will be dealt with uh, in executive session and the other was discussion of the fingerprint machine. And I think based upon what we, what we did earlier, we're going to hold on uh, providing a new fingerprint machine right now at this time. We've no budget, budgeting is coming for the town, so we'll revisit things then. I think that was the.
After your other meeting, we might know more too.
Right.
I'm hoping we're gonna know a lot more.
I hope so too. Yes. Okay.
I can remember it now.
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, chief. All right, John Paul Fagin, the town health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable and apparently random gardening constable. I was stopped at Rutland Town School for.
Gardening without a permit.
Gardening without a permit.
Um, we are seeing a change in the traffic through town, um, getting a lot, lot of complaints on the town line road in Killington Avenue since Route Four has been restored. Um, I've been putting in some extra hours, especially in the morning when the complaints are most on those roads.
Thank you.
I'll notify everyone that needs to.
Route seven north, you know, from Mac Steel to Polster or East Pittsburgh Road. I can't keep up with them. I just can't. Yeah, I figured. I can hit that a couple hours a day, but it's just solid, right? Yeah. They, the speeds are running. I did a speed survey on Sunday because the weekend traffic has changed with school. We have a lot more weekend traffic around town. It seems on seven and four with the advent of school, people doing stuff on the weekends, they can't get done during the week. Um, but I did a traffic survey and the average speed from McKinley Avenue to East Pittsburgh Road is fifty-two miles an hour and it's a forty mile an hour zone.
Even now, after the.
Right now. Oh, uh, it's picked up. Okay, the average that I did a couple of years ago was fifty.
Hmm.
So this lane thing has made people anxious to get out of that single lane. And when they break into the two lanes in town, it just turns into a race to the one lane north of East.
I've only driven it a couple of times and it was fine and it was slower, but you know, it's luck of the draw as to when you hit it, I think.
The morning and ru- morning and afternoon rush hour seem to be the most.
Try getting out of your driveway at those times.
Yeah.
On, on Route Seven.
Right, right. Um, I do have the Cortina scheduled to check out the doors for your next meeting, cause I was aware they're gonna be coming, so I will do a review of that to confirm with you whether or not they have.
Good, thank you.
And uh, as far as the billing is concerned, thirty-three thousand.
Oh.
I don't, unless you want to go over all that stuff again, I don't think it's necessary.
Um, we did, we did a, oh, did we do a motion? We did a motion in our committee of the hall.
Seventy-eight thousand, that's taken care of to finish the site worker.
I was just referencing the net number that Marion added.
Okay.
That number is the internal stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The things we need.
Did we vote on that?
We put it off.
We put it off until after your.
Finance committee meets, okay, gotcha.
Get a hand along for the money.
So we, we had an earlier meeting um, of the select board acting as a committee of the whole for the public safety building. JP was kind enough to go through a lot of numbers for us and we came down to an additional thirty-three thousand dollars to, that was needed to put um, furniture, uh, furnishings, technology and other things into the new public safety building. So that when we open it, there will be things in it, excluding of course, this desk, which stays where it is. Any other questions for JP?
You know what the?
Okay.
Uh, we talked the other day about the water tank. Did you have a chance to ask or no?
I did ask. Uh, the general contractor could not find it in the specs, so it's on the agenda for Friday morning's meeting.
Okay, perfect.
The, the, Chris had found that some of these cement tanks uh, developed leaks. Um, and I understand that that was a settlement issue on one of those, but I don't know for sure. Um, we shouldn't have any settlement issues on that lot, given all the stone that's there.
Right.
But um, still, he, he raised the issue with me and I talked to the general contractor about perhaps lining that concrete tank before we fill it. Um, Bridgewater had to empty theirs and then.
Clean it.
Clean it and then apply a sealant on the inside and I'm wondering, I asked the general if we could get in front of that
Mm-hmm.
and seal it before we fill it, so we don't have to do the cleaning process, which was fifty percent of the cost of sealing it.
Kind of. Do we, do we have a number on that?
No, no, I will, we'll talk at Friday's meeting, weekly meeting about it with the architect, get his feedback on that and then I'll report to you at your next meeting.
Okay, very good.
Did Ed design, so you should ask Ed if he designed the water tank under the office that Neil Aaron Breen's office in Brandon, cause their tank is under their office space and maybe see what they did. I don't know, because I think that was, they were the contact or the architect for that.
Um, yeah, they did one.
Launch round school has one also.
Yeah, Killington, Killington Fire Station, there's another tank, tank also.
We did one at Vermont Country Store in Rockingham and we had to empty it and fix the tie holes that were leaking.
Yeah, you did.
They leak in the form ties.
Oh.
So the, the concrete forms go together and they have the concrete form ties.
They go through.
And they'll, and they'll fall the steel between the form ties.
Yeah.
So you have to grind them out and you fill them with the Sikka cocking, cover them with hydraulics, man. I don't know if they did that or not.
So those are things to find out before you put water.
They had drain it and go down and there, yeah, it was two days of fun.
The state inspector was at the station. He said it looks great, no violations, but that was just a concern he had from, he wants he'd seen in the past.
Fair enough.
Well, I'm glad to get ahead of it.
Yeah, really.
Is that Josh?
That was Matt, actually.
That was Matt. Well, he knows from Josh's Bridgewater.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's Josh's station, Bridgewater.
Yeah. What's the paving schedule JP for the?
I don't have that, Joe. I can give it to you in a couple of months.
I was just curious. I usually try to wait till last probably to do that, but I was just curious when they were thinking of paving. I mean, they got plenty of time before it gets cold.
Any other questions for JP?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your help on this. Um, Barbara Nice Pulling, good evening.
Good evening. Do you folks remember the pocket park at Center Rutland Falls? We haven't talked about it in a while.
We have an update.
We do have an update and, and it is encouraging. Um, GMP is, is getting close to the end of their really long relicensing process uh, with the federal government. And one of the last things um, that they were dealing with um, was our site and how archaeologically important it is. And so the state had to be consulted too. And it turns out um, that the state um, thinks there's more archaeological value there than the, the feds do. The, I mean, everyone recognizes there was, there's a ton of history there, going back to the, you know, start of Rutland and indigenous tribes and, and all that. Um, but there's also been a ton of activity there and disturbance. So the, what, what's there for archaeological remains? Um, you know, are fragmented, broken, um, and less significant. The, the state still um, was, was thinking it, it should be preserved as much as possible, but the state was overruled uh, by the federal government, by FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. So um, what that means is um, that piece of property that we're looking at for the park is now outside of GMP's um, dam and hydropower um, siting and property. So it's considered an unregulated piece of property now and GMP is open to selling it to the town. Um, and um, the initial conversations we've had is that it could be nominal. And they didn't think the taxes were that high on that, that piece of property either. Um, GMP is interested in consolidating its assets. Um, so there's, but there's no plan to put it on the market until um, there are some discussions with us, the town of Rutland. It could be a purchase. It could still be a um, you know, access agreement. Um, but you know, the bottom line is that it's free and clear now. The state could get involved again if we were looking for grants and that was a requirement of the grant that that uh, VDHP, the Vermont Division of Historic Preservation, um, looked at the site. So we just have to be cognizant of that. Um, and maybe be cognizant that, that the state does consider it valuable and maybe get their, their insight. But we're at the point now where GMP is open to um, discussions with the town about the site. And uh, that will be the next meeting, I think. Well, hopefully we'll get that scheduled soon. So it's looking pretty good. The, the fact that quite a few years ago, Omea owned the uh, property and promised that there would be a recreational site there, that that has been part of the federal records and they don't forget those things or they dig them up. So um, it's not a requirement that it become a recreational um, asset for the town. Um, but it would be, uh, it would certainly be preferred and it would probably help GMP's relicensing forty years from now or whenever it is. So that's where we stand. Um, I think we're creeping toward some um, pocket park there. Uh, do, what's the sense of the board? Sue discussions with GMP and see if we can.
You got this much time and money and effort in it.
Acquire the prime, we've got a, we did do a grant and some studies and.
We'll see what gets done first, pocket park with the sidewalk. We'll see what gets done first, Pocket Park or the sidewalk.
All right, so thank you Barbara, um, why don't you include us in or, you know, one of us maybe, and I'm perfectly willing to pursue this. Um, in any future discussions and I'll bring back any proposals, of course, to the full board. So let's see what we can do, thank you.
Yeah, that sounds good, yes. Let's meet with them and, um, other than that, I don't have much from the, the Town Planning Commission.
Um, I did visit with Town Council and mentioned the subdivision ordinance. And he will be, I mean, he, he will be getting it to you very soon, cause he was mostly through it. Um, but with a caution that because it was adopted in what, uh, nineteen eighty and with revisions, major revisions in the statute in twenties, twenty oh six. Um, there could be a major rewrite ahead for the planning commission, just to bring it into compliance, so. Just a heads up on that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, well, it mean it, it's something we have to do, we, we have to be compliant, so, yeah.
Okay. All right, and I think we have scheduled the Regional Planning Commission to come in to discuss, uh, down at the bottom, um, Rutland Regional Planning Commission for municipal, oh, wait a minute. The Act two fifty revisions and village center designation. Um, the representative started those discussions two weeks ago. I've put it on the agenda mostly to remind us that we need to dive in a little deeper and maybe vote on whether we want to pursue either of these, either the village designation or zoning. At our next meeting, so if the planning commission has any recommendations, our, our town planning commission, uh, we'd like to hear them, okay, that would play into what we decide to do.
Okay.
Okay, will you meet before? Yeah.
Well, yeah, we, yeah, we meet later this week, um. Yeah, we'll, we'll try to get the members up to speed on, on the new Act two fifty.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, questions for Barbara Nice Pulling, Chair of our Town Planning Commission? No? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your work.
Thank you, thank you.
Take care Barbara.
Okay, Mike Rowe.
He's, he had be at a school board meeting.
Yes, okay. Larry Del Venery was here earlier and, and he was here two, two meetings ago anyway. Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
I'm here.
Good evening.
Evening, everybody.
Okay, what have you got for us? And I've got, I've got two dump sites for you.
Oh lovely. Uh, so we spent the last couple of weeks, uh, we were pretty busy, um, we did the, we finished up the post road sidewalk, which was a huge achievement, we're so happy to be done with that.
Yes.
I did.
It looks good.
It came out nice, I'm, I'm pretty happy with it, uh, the grass is coming in crazy fast, so that'll, that should put a nice finishing touch on it. Um, I spent some today, some time today working on um, the grant uh, submission, just to kind of get a head start on it, I'm still waiting for the paving bill and I got another uh, one other bill I'm waiting for, but right now we're at like eighty five thousand, six hundred dollars on a ninety five thousand dollar grant. So by the time we get the paving, we'll be just over the ninety six thousand and then we get fifty percent back of the ninety six thousand, so. We should have that covered pretty well.
And we go to count in kind as our share?
Yes, absolutely, that's, that's what I kind of worked on, it was our hours and our truck hours, equipment hours, uh, materials and all of that stuff, so. Uh, that's got us up to eighty five, six right now. So uh, I get the, I'm pretty sure the bid price was like twelve or thirteen thousand for the paving, so uh, that'll get us where we need to be. Uh, we started with our grants and aid projects uh, last week after we finished the post road sidewalk. Uh, we got three of the five done for this year. Uh, we got one small one left and one fairly decent one uh, down off the end of where the tractor trailers parked on off, uh, Cop John Drive, uh, there's a, a, an outfall that comes across Route seven that's down over the bank. And there's some debate over whether that's ours or Vtrans and it's, it's on, it came up on our list of things to do with the state and Vtrans isn't jumping in on it, so we gotta go bushwhacking and that's, we'll be down there for a few days, that's, it's a kind of a mess, it's been, just left for however long it's been there, so. Um, and we took an afternoon, uh, actually after we finished the post road job, we had some time in the afternoon, so we went up to uh, East Pittsford Road and we had an erosion problem in a driveway. Um, so we stoned the head wall and the outfall, just to kind of keep the, the water from washing out the edges of the driveway. Um, we did uh, spend a little bit of time Thursday morning doing some potholes, so we had to fill in uh, the concrete pad on the back of the town hall building um, from where their farm work was. So while we were out, we went and did some potholes and took care of that. Um, and that's kind of where we are.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go first. There are two mattresses on the roadside, under the by, the bypass bridges on Creek Road, just north of my property, they have been there now three weeks. And my concern is, yeah, it looks like hell and, you know, when Jamie and I are greening up in the spring, we'll pull them to the roadside. But hopefully they're not still there, because once you start throwing things, people, that's assigned to other people to throw things, so please, please. Can you pick them up, please?
Yeah, we can do that, I mean, it's, it's a catch twenty two, if you leave them, um, they decide they can dump more there and if you pick them up, they decide they can dump more there, so either way.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, he's not sleeping there?
And then, I'm pretty sure, cause it, it wouldn't be a, if, if they're gonna sleep, I'll tell you where they're gonna sleep, so.
Don't give anybody any ideas, Mary.
Right, um, and then at the end of Park Street, which is town property, it's an old road, which I think we've, I don't know, if it's still, yeah, is it? Um, and there's, at least, there's a, I, I got sent a picture, there's certainly a dump site and there might also be a, a motor vehicle there, whether somebody's living in it or not, I don't know. But that site also needs to be cleaned up and maybe secured, if that's the issue, as we've done with other sites around town. Um, that have become attractive nuisances like that.
Is there a suggestion for securing it?
I don't know.
A gate?
Um, possibly, but we'd need to know the status of that road, I don't know myself. Used to be where, you know, the old Billings, you know, the old Billings Covered Bridge used to be going across Dodder Creek.
It's been a dump site forever.
Yeah, you do know that if it's anything to do with the town owning it, you can't gate it.
Oh, I understand, I remember all the stuff we went through before, yep, yep.
No concrete barricades.
Right. So let's, if you could just sort of look and see what the issue is and see if there's something we can do about it, because we really ought to, it's a mess.
Could we give it to Billings and make it their problem?
Um.
Who owns the land around there?
We, the town owns some of that. Yeah, and, and Jesse's.
Is that Mark Foley?
Mark Foley's down there as well, yeah.
Cause I don't, where Jesse's, were they the boys plant corn?
Yep.
Is that theirs or do they rent that from somebody or they rent it from us or they use ours?
They use ours, they use the.
I mean, I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
Cause if that's the road to nowhere, then we can gate it.
Well, let's make sure it's not.
You know, and then if somebody's using it, they just, we gate it and give, and they put their key on it and run their farming machine right down there and that's the end of it.
Right, so.
Yeah, and the.
In your spare time, thank you, Dave.
City has their water main runs through there now, it goes down to.
Yes, because I gave them a right of way across the property on the other side, so, yeah. The city might have an interest in what happens down there.
Right. Yeah, and then just one quick thing, I know this came up, this is kind of goofy, but um, it, it came up, I think during, right after the election, the last election and uh, committee assignments and everything. And I believe that uh, Joe and Kurt are deemed the public works. So are we considered public works now or are we still highway? And the reason I ask, we're gonna, I need to get some uh, uniform shirts for some of the guys. And we're thinking about redesigning the logo and that kind of stuff and.
I think that would be a splendid task for Joe and Kurt regardless of what committee name there is. Come on, I give you tough stuff, this should, this should be fun, yeah.
Call yourself what you want to call yourself, in my opinion.
Well, within.
The, um, you know, you got the trucks kind of all lettered out of Rutland Town Highway, but that it's fine on the trucks, if you want to put something different on the church, says Rutland Town Public Works Department, that's okay with me, because you do everything. You're handling all of the stormwater, you're handling all of the water and sewer and all of the road stuff, so. You, you, you are the only full-time crew in town that gets all of the tasks, always has been, probably always will be.
Yep, okay. That's all I got.
Dave.
Thank you.
Did, did you read the Pennington's and this ongoing debate over this plug, non-plug culvert? And do we need to do something?
I, I was totally.
So this is B in your pocket, B um, and B one and B three and all of that, so. Is this, is this issue resolved, I guess is my question right now?
I believe Dave had the fire department go up and run some water through it and they said probably culvert's not plugged.
Alright, you can stick your head in there and look at the other side.
Okay, so I'm not sure, these people are causing a lot of hate and discontent over some issue. And then they talked about hiring a contractor to dump some stone and make a dam. And I believe that's the reason they got the letter about doing work in the town right of way without a permit. And we couldn't understand that, but I can understand it quite clearly, so I, I don't know, I know you looked at it, as far as you know, there's no issue, right, Dave? Or, or are we not looking at this?
No, he, so, he, so I went, I went up there to mark out the culvert for Chris, just so that he would know which one and where the outfall was and the whole thing. And Mr. Pennington came out and uh, proceeded to chew on me a little bit and I informed him that I couldn't speak to him, because he had mentioned in his letter that he was getting a lawyer and I'm not being opposed by anybody, cause I've done that and there's no fun in that, and that didn't that didn't deter him and he continued to chew on me. Um, so the culvert that I marked out is the culvert that it was, the fire department went up there and ran, I forget now, five hundred thousand gallons through it at pressure. Um, there is a video um, of before the water came out of it, the air being blown out of the culvert, making the grass, the amber waves of grain flow. And uh, there's, that culvert is not plugged, if, if water's coming down the street and going into his backyard, it's because um, you know, half the Atlantic Ocean is falling out of the sky in, in ten minutes and I don't, there's nothing we can do about that, it's the, the, the culvert is not.
And it's my, it's my understanding that the culvert wasn't plugged before the fire department even went there, right?
It was not.
Okay, all right, we should make sure that's in the minutes, okay.
And, and have the, pre, uh, I guess they reported us to the state um, something to do with uh, all these different things, so have you been in touch with those individuals also?
I have, I reached out to, I forget his name now, from, Sam from A and R.
Um, yep.
He sent on the email to Bill, I told Bill that I would respond to it, which I did. Uh, I sent him a lengthy email and explained the situation. He asked if I would report back to him as to the status of the height of the uh, culvert when we got, got flushed. And he pretty much understood and he said, it sounds to me like it's a matter of too much rain. You know, these, these big rain events and um, you know, it's water coming off the road and it is what it is, but it has nothing to do with the culvert. And I reported back to him when uh, the fire department did indeed flush the culvert and told him this is what happened. And you know, if he needs video, video, we have video of everything that happened there and he was totally satisfied and uh, we, we wished each other a good day and we moved on.
Okay.
And that's a fifteen inch according to the email, so.
Correct.
Just uh, that was the original standard that we had, right?
Yes, and it's a, uh, it was put in in two thousand nineteen and so it's ADS, it's like a shotgun barrel, there's nothing inside, it's not corrugated metal. It's, it's smooth, it's smooth as smooth can be, there's nothing, there's, there's no way to plug it, I mean, it can be plugged, but there's just the, the water that goes down that street and goes into that culvert is, there's nothing to slow it down.
Okay, good.
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Matt?
So, um, as to the size of the, I mean, that, that sounds recent. Well, what's the current standard for these things, I mean, obviously, we're having more and more of these extreme rain events, so. Um, I mean, if the culvert is not adequate to handle that, then can that be addressed at some point? Or what would be the schedule for that sort of thing to be up?
Our, our uh, stormwater standards refer back to uh, AOT for driveways and that kind of thing for uh, the AOTV trans uh, standards, which are fifteen inch. Um, so we adopted, basically adopted their policy and fifteen inches the standard. Uh, we, we can go there, put in a bigger one, but that, that changes a lot of.
I'm familiar with, with, with where this property is and where the culvert is. And I know where it goes, I know where the intake is, I don't remember where the outflow is, I mean, does it go straight into the middle of their front yard? Or?
No, it goes, it, it continues, uh, so it's on the north end of the driveway for the uh, pump station is where the inlet is and it continues south under that driveway for forty feet. And, and daylight's into, there's a stone ditch uh, that runs across the front of the property for the, the pump house or the wellhouse or whatever it is. There's a stone ditch that runs down through there and it goes down. Not their, not their side of the road.
I thought, okay, I thought I was understanding that it went like kitty quarter under the road and came out on their side. But so it's, it stays on the same side of the road, comes out by the pump house.
But there's a different issue, there's, there's another, another issue up there.
Yeah, okay, and I would want to ask you about that, but so this culvert runs the same side as the, where the ditch is.
Yeah, it runs straight down the east side of the road.
Okay, so their contention was that it was plugged and therefore the water is flowing across the road as a result.
Correct.
Okay.
That'd be a lot of water.
Well, I, or the, I mean, the, I guess the, the other thing to, to consider would be the rest of the ditch, I mean, is the rest of the ditch clean now or is it?
Yeah, I'm, I remember when we did that one. Still line that up too there, how's we're.
Cause they live right at the bottom of the first hill on Hitsel. And so if there's the water, for whatever reason, can't flow adequately into the ditch, it's gonna end up in their yard.
No, it, they live, they live across the street from the pump house.
I know.
Which is at the top of the hill.
Right, well, they're at, yeah, the bottom of the first hill before you go down the big hill, but.
So the culvert's not plugged and everybody's checked, so.
So, has there been anything else done on the road or the ditching or anywhere else that would affect it? Affect this issue other than the amount of rain that falls from the sky now compared to the past?
No. I mean, I, I don't know the last time the street was paved, but that would be the last thing done to the road that would change anything and that was, I don't, I don't know, I can look it up and.
I think she mentioned that this has been an issue for a few years, I'm, I guess I'm wondering if it is related to, to the pavement and there was another property owner on that street that mentioned to me a water flow issue near the top that apparently has been going on since the repaving too, so. I don't, I don't know what might have happened there, but I mean, I think we want to be avoiding creating water flow issues if we can with the paving.
Yeah, well, it all, all depends on what you do too. Yeah. Sometimes when you reclaim a road, you raise the height of the roads several inches, it will change and that. That, I don't know if that road was reclaimed the last time it was done or just paved. So, and, and, you know, they, you'd have to go back in the schedule and see what the history is, but. It seems like there's numerous complaints around town and I do believe most of them are the fact that when it rains. It rains like two or three inches in a very short period of time and it's creating events that haven't occurred. That frequently.
Yeah, well, so it seems like going forward, we might have to go to bigger than fifteen inch culverts to accommodate that. Or maybe the answer is, I don't know, because obviously I'm not familiar with the science, but. Maybe there's no size culvert that accommodates those situations. I don't, I don't know, but.
A lot of the times, what, a lot of the times the issue is the grading around the house, not necessarily the grading of the road. Road's been pre-existing. It's a non, it's an impervious surface. There's gonna be runoff from the road. And the grading around the house may direct water towards the house instead of away from it.
Well, okay, but homeowner, homeowner is saying something changed the last few years.
I don't believe anything's changed in the last few years. They maybe noticed something now that they didn't maybe notice before, but.
Well, I mean, they've been living there for decades, so.
Yeah.
So Bill, with this issue with the crossroad and I, I take it that was a water district thing? Has that resolved?
So, well, not, not exactly. So when we were up there, when, when Dave and the guys that got up there. They said that there was a, a cut in the road that had been patched and when we went up there, I saw the same thing. Dan came out when, when we were up, the fire department was up there and started asking a whole bunch of questions and, and. Made representations that weren't exactly accurate, but I asked him about the crosscut in the road because I asked Dave, who, you know, did, did we dig this up? And Dave said, no, that's nothing we did. And I asked Dan and Dan said, yeah. Marie had, Marie had handled that. He wasn't sure the specifics. We said Marie had handled it. I said, okay, cause we, we didn't know anything about it. We didn't have an excavation permit on file. He's like. We have an agreement that from years ago, that the fire district can do the work it needs to do. Without notifying the town because we had done this work. And Byron had gotten very upset with us because we dug up the road and I said, oh no, we've got this agreement and we were all set. Great. I need, I'd love to have a copy of that so we can, we can have it out on our records. Cause that's the first I've heard of it. He's like, no problem. I'll send it over to you. So I memorialized our conversation and, and because it was, it was important. And I get the letter from them saying, I must have misheard him over the sound of the truck. Not what happened.
Okay, well, so is there an agreement or not?
He, he said there was one. I have no idea. That's the first I've heard of it, but. There was, there also was representation that our highway department was not keeping up with road maintenance records and that we should check if we even have them. Which we don't, we don't have, we didn't do that.
So do we think somebody cut?
Oh, absolutely. They're right across.
Cut across the road and put something in there?
Hundred percent.
Do we know what the something is in there?
But it runs from the corner of the Pennington's lot across to, to the other side of Farm Lane.
And what's on the other side of Farm Lane?
There's a curb box sticking up on the, in the grass ground just off the edge of the block.
It's a water line. The water line runs down that's east side of the road.
Okay.
So there was, there was excavation work done. There's no doubt. And we don't know who did it. We don't know why it was done.
And there's no record of it.
And there's no record of it. And Dan had said, they have, they have a document that gives them permission to do the work. So I asked him for a copy of it and.
So now have you gone to the fire district to ask them?
I have, I have not yet. No, this, this, the letter, the response we got back came to me and, and to Mary. But that, that was, that was after, they sent all of you and I gave a copy of that there too, the, a letter to the board saying there's this issue and then. Then the state was contacted and, and so there's a lot of things that have happened. So at this point, I mean, I'm certainly can make the request to the fire district.
Yeah.
I, I would.
Well, that's the likely source.
I think we.
I mean.
Marie used to be, we used to work for the fire district. Now she doesn't. So whoever's in charge of that now is.
The last information that I had for, because I tried my best to keep up with who's on. The fire district committees and whatnot. I have, I have a list. It's, it's, they don't tell us generally who it is until it changes, but. That was the last I knew that she was part of that committee. So if she's not fine, then I will find out who it is and, and see what we can get. But it was, it was not a, it's not an old piece of work. Like it was done fairly recently, so. And it was patched, but still it was.
But it's under a town highway and we could be responsible for something that we don't know anything about. And if it's a water line, then somebody could lose their water supply if we. Need to get in there and do digging in the town road. So everybody loses.
Water line up.
Yeah.
When we did the culvert down the bottom of the hill by the pond.
Inlet to that culvert.
Yeah.
Almost is at the same point where that crosscut comes across the road. They almost are in the same spot.
Okay.
So.
All right. So if you could check with the water district to find out if there was work done. And we've got to have some record like how deep and what it is and.
Yeah, so if it's less than about five feet, it's gonna freeze.
Yeah.
See, and I don't believe that. Byron would give any fire district a card block to just dig in the town. That, that is not, that is not how the town operates. Cause we've always had a digging in the right of way through permit and all of this stuff, so. I, I don't, I don't, I think that they just figure that, oh, we gotta do this and they just go do it. And we're up here on this little road and nobody's gonna know we're digging.
We did have an issue with another fire district who had done something similar. We had this letter saying you, you've stopped now.
That's a, that's down on that other section of the road that badly needs pavement. Yeah, yeah.
Right. So Bill will follow up with the fire district. Okay, thank you very much.
Be done with Dave. I guess we've done.
Dave, anything else?
No, I think that's enough.
Um, any questions or comments for Dave? All right. Thank you very much. One thing that I was, it, it looks like Marcia is not on and Bill is up and as he is heading up here. I did want to make a note. You remember that we. Appointed a lister at our last meeting and the question came up as to whether that person needed to run in the next election, which is November. Carrie kindly did a quick check with the Secretary of State's office and shared the quotation from statute. And it appears that the person who was appointed has to run in the next annual meeting, which I interpret as town meeting. So we don't have to run around and probably we'd be out of time anyway. We don't have to do a ballot. We don't have to do a petition. We'll just make sure we add it to town meeting. So that's where we are.
Perfect.
So thanks to Carrie for doing that work, getting that information. Okay, Bill.
Good evening. We have a few things to go through. So you had mentioned the regional planning commission requests for municipal representation for the bus.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so we will post that. And they, they just, they sent out, and we are, we are by far not the only, the, not the only town to not have someone, but they want to get. Com- served communities with representation. So we will, we will solicit some, some interest. Uh, so we've taken care of all of B in the packet for Hitsel Terrace. I did include for you the, the amendment to the personnel policy. Goes along with personal community meetings. Uh, you have two letters and Mary, you do have the. Pretty originals in the green folder there. Uh, one is the welcome letter to Eco Car Wash. And the other is a letter to one of our local members who recently, his wife had a baby.
Yeah, okay. So Eco Car Wash is. Welcoming, basically welcoming them to town and offering our assistance or the assistance of Bill if anything. So this is kind of carrying on a tradition that Josh started a few years back. So I'm gonna sign and circulate and. Bill can send it out.
Yep.
And, and the same with the employees. Congratulations. You know, it's really.
Period at the end of the third paragraph.
Oh, it does?
Well, why don't you go right ahead?
I might have.
I have blue.
Why are you doing that? Also in the folder is the Stan Tech contract for the sidewalk. Uh, they are good. They signed it. So there's the copies there to sign. There are also two additional ones at the end. There are two people they are adding to the team and we need to acknowledge that we are okay with those people being added to the team. And we are.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
So, so there's actually four, four things to sign for you.
Okay.
One signature required.
One, one signature each page. It's four, four signatures. Yes, one signature, one, one signature.
Mary to sign on behalf of the town.
Was I authorized last time?
Yes, we did last time.
Okay.
The only, so the, the contract is the same as it was two weeks ago. The difference is there's the paperwork approving adding the two individuals to the team.
Okay, so why don't we just do a motion saying approve, you need to sign the amended contract? Motion's made and seconded to approve the amended contract with Stan Tech. And authorize me to sign on behalf of the town. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries and I'm gonna start signing.
The concrete work at the front and the back is done.
That's good.
Yay.
It is good.
Five years in the making.
It's the door open.
The door opens.
I gotta check the other half on the way out.
Yeah, and Royals was out and did a bunch of surveying and we did a lot of talking. They're gonna give us some ideas for, for changing that. There's no way to do two doors. It's, that's not, there's no way to do a vestigial. It's not, not big enough. I, I thought they'd come out and we talked about it and it's just, we'd have to, it's a lot of work to do that, so.
Who's the consultant selection committee? Are, is that you guys?
It was the highway committee, me, Dave, regional planning commission.
Signature municipal representative. And then signature of member of consultant selection committee.
That'll, that'll go to Stephanie. I'll send, I'll send that.
And she's gonna sign it, but these guys don't sign it?
No.
I'm trying to pin them down.
I want my name anywhere.
They're on the committee. We could, we could have them sign it. They're on the committee.
We designated it. I want my name on that.
As, as a general, general topic, but we, we, if, if there's any want shredded after a meeting. We, we talk about that a lot. Cause when they have something, it should be set aside separately because that box does not get shredded. That's just recycling. So we do have a shredding, a large shredding bin, but if there's things that.
Yes.
At, at any point you want shredded, just put them aside separately and we'll, we'll take care of, make sure they, make sure they get, make sure they get that done. And let's see, the last thing we, we touched on briefly. Offline was the invoices for software services for. Non-town employees. And I did send a email following up requesting this be taken care of and it was miserly declined. So.
So I guess when the license runs out, the computer don't work. Did, did, do you guys have a personnel committee? I thought.
We did.
Was this discussed? I thought that was requested.
Came in at a different time, I think.
Okay.
Do we have? Yeah, personnel, no. Personnel, we worked on the personnel.
Right, well, I, I thought that. He had, he had requested a.
Oh, I know what the request was.
Yeah, to talk about this, wasn't it? Yeah, and, and I guess that didn't happen.
Full select board.
Well, whatever.
Yeah.
Because if I do recall, Kevin has weighed in on this.
Um, if I could. If we do go, we do have to do an executive session and for a personnel matter anyway.
That would be a good time to discuss.
To, we can, I did obtain some advice from council concerning this.
Okay.
So that would be a good time for. All right.
That's all I need. Good way to handle it. Love it.
Okay.
Nothing else, Bill?
Nothing else.
Sweet.
All right.
Tried to keep it.
Any questions of? Any questions of Bill? Okay.
This, this just informational only. Bond stuff.
Contractors partial release and waiver.
Or is that?
Well, this was part of the public safety building.
JP, I think that's probably JP gave you guys.
No, it was on the desk. I think it was on the desk.
Carrie shared, shared some of it.
Okay, there's a lot of stuff that appeared on the desk that I had nothing to do with, so I don't know where it came from.
Just found a home.
Okay, um, so if, let's see, what else is on? Police committee, we do have one matter that we would like to take in executive session, personnel committee. We met for an hour and forty-five minutes. And we got a third of the way through the revised personnel policy draft. And we have scheduled another meeting and we're determined. To get through. It is tomorrow. Um, it might be only another third or we might get through the whole thing, but we're working diligently. And we can't wait to give you folks this big honkin' document, document that you can go through at your leisure.
So we know it's good.
Of course.
Good, move on.
Um, and as I mentioned, the public safety building committee. Met as a committee of the whole. And any other new items? I don't think there are. The Act two fifty revisions. Yeah, it's gonna be dealt with at either the next meeting and, and Barbara's gonna have the planning commission weigh in. Reminder, next meeting, we will be having Mr. Anthony from the mall. And I think Drew from the Cortina.
I think so.
Yeah, um, so activity then. Rutland Regional Planning Commission, rep for the bus, we're gonna post that. And executive session. We have a couple of things in executive session. One to hear. Um, legal advice from our attorney on various matters and the other a personnel matter. Is there a motion?
Don't move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of executive session, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, we're in executive session. Yeah, we're back on the record. We're out of executive session. It is eight thirty-six. Is there a motion?
Yes, in conformance with our personnel policy, I would move that the board authorized police department to. Uh, extend that offer of employment to the candidate that they have identified. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, it's unanimous. Um, is there any other motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Make whatever motion you want. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.